Ladies and gentlemen, if you would have a seat please and kind of quiet down. We're actually having a meeting tonight, so I hereby call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Counselor Winter is excused this evening and Counselor Benton will be arriving soon. All other counselors are present, I think. Or at least close to being present. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Stephanie Yarrow.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening and Stephanie, thank you for leading us. Just some housekeeping, the civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign up table. Tonight is the first of three public hearings the council is required to hold on the city's operating budget. Tonight's meeting will focus on the social goal budgets, which include cultural services, family and community services, fire, police, parks and recreation, and senior affairs among others. On May 10th, the council will hold a second public hearing to discuss the city's physical goal budgets, which include aviation, DMD, planning, and transit among others. At tonight's meeting and the meeting on May 10th, we will receive public comment. The council will hold a third committee of the whole meeting on May 17th to consider amendments or for substitutes to the bills on tonight's agenda. No public comment will be taken at the May 17th meeting. At the end of the May 17th meeting, the budget as amended or substituted will be sent to the Monday, May 21st city council meeting for adoption. Public comment will be taken at the May 21st council meeting. We do appreciate everyone being here this evening and your participation in this process. It's one of the most valuable tools the council has in order to determine whether or not the proposed budget meets the needs of the citizens of Albuquerque. We do have several signed up for public comment, so we will go to that public comment with each speaker having two minutes. The green light on the podium will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. At two minutes, it will turn red and ring to signal your time is up. I want to please ask you to hold your applause, hold your comments, please be respectful of all speakers, whether you like what they say or not, because that is the right thing to do. This is the same as a court of law. Please be respectful and let this meeting go forward, because we do have quite a few speakers. So the first speaker is, I'm going to call three speakers' names and you will be speaking in that order. After the second one is finished, I'll call more, so please, all of you, when I call your name, come to the front and be prepared to stand up. First speaker is Jay Spang. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. How are you? Thank you, common council, for your continued support of Warehouse 508 by NMX Sports. My name is Jay Spang. I'm here with Eddie Vargas and we're here to discuss unfortunately our financial crisis that we're having. For the past nine years, NMX Sports has been running an incredibly successful program, after-school program at Warehouse 508. Currently, the city funds Warehouse 508 arts programming with a $219,000 annual contract. We depend largely on fundraising though, in order to meet our substantial goals, which we've done every year. We've crushed our numbers every year. In fact, we double, sometimes even triple those. Our largest fundraiser is our ski card, and as you all know, this was a lousy ski season, to say the very least. So, we are at a point now where we're actually going to have to either reduce our programming or even possibly close. Our numbers look like it's going to be September of 18 when we actually run out of money. So, that would be a complete disservice to our youth. It's not an option that I'd like to see happen. I'm not going to let that happen. In fact, in order to keep the doors open, unfortunately, I had to actually fall on the sword for the organization, so I'm no longer the executive director and Eddie has stepped in as interim director in that case. So, without my salary on the book, it does give us an extension, but not a solution, you know? And this is where the council comes in. This is where you guys can be the hero. You know, this is with a simple vote, you can help us make sure that we're thriving and we continue to serve the thousands and thousands of young youth people that come through our doors that we impact. So we need your help to make sure we don't close our doors. I know it's a tough budget cycle, I know, but I urge you guys to increase the funding for Warehouse 508 by NMX, and this is as a citizen now asking that. So, I guess my time is out. Is that what that means?
Thank you, Mr. Spang. If you'd wait just a moment, Counselor Gibson has a question.
Hello, Mr. Spang. I just have a couple of questions for you and just in the past year, the past 12 months, can you give us an idea of how many kids you have serviced and kind of an idea of their age range?
Absolutely. Our programming ranges from 11 to 20-year-olds, so we turn no one down. We make sure that our doors are open for everyone and we do that through our scholarship opportunity, to which we empower them through community activism. They give us five hours of donated time in order to be able to take our classes. In our classes, we do 1,000 youth every year, and that's about 300 for our sports program and 700 for our arts program. And then, we also host 70-plus concerts a year at our facility, and that number ranges anywhere from 7,000 to 14,000 youth coming just for all ages, safe shows at our facility.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Mr. Spang, it's good to see you as always. It's a great program. I know we invested more in capital improvements for the facilities in the last few years.
Thank you, sir.
Have you submitted or made a request for specific funding for specific programs this year through the administration or through the council, or do you need to do that?
Well, I did meet with Mayor Keller on Tuesday to discuss that. Obviously, with the new transition, a lot of the meetings have been pushed back. A meeting with Carol Pierce here next week, met with Shell, and so yes, we are talking with all the divisions and some things are starting to percolate.
Okay. Would you be sure to share whatever you're sharing with them, with our staff as quickly as possible, so we can put that into our list of stuff?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spang.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Eddie Vargas, followed by Jill Lane and John Chavis.
Hello, council members. Thank you for hearing me out. As Jay mentioned, my name's Eddie and I'm the interim executive director for Warehouse 508 and NMX Sports. I would like to add, aside from what Jay said, that NMX 508, aside from running the Warehouse 508 contract for the city of Albuquerque, NMX has also been partnering with Parks and Recreation since the winter of 2005. Since then, NMX has organized and managed the only urban-based learn to ski and snowboard program in the state of New Mexico. We also organized and managed a summer camp with the city that has sold out the past seven summers. Although these programs are partnerships with Parks and Recreation, NMX has continued to do so without any sort of monetary support from the city. All the money has come from programming fees and from our own fundraising efforts. Parks and Recreation would like to see us expand our programming partnerships with them, and NMX would like to do so, but to do so would require the council's financial support. I ask that the council considers increasing our budget, doing so just to ensure our unique and effective programming continues. Thanks for your time.
Jill Lane, John Chavis, and Marie Coleman.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I represent the Anderson Abruzzo Albuquerque International Balloon Museum, and we are here to remind you of the significance of the balloon museum to the city of Albuquerque. We represent the ballooning capital of the world as Albuquerque, and we bring folks from around the world into Albuquerque, and it helps our economic basis here in the city. Some of the great things that are happening at the balloon museum, we are actually moving into our second decade, and this year, we're going to exceed over 140,000 visitors. Now, in the past, in the early days of the balloon museum, many of the visitors came during Fiesta. That's not true anymore. Only 17% of our visitors come during Fiesta. The rest are all aligned with our exhibits, our education programs, and our events at the balloon museum. So we serve a very important role to the city of Albuquerque, to the community and the people that live in this community. That's from the children who attend our award-winning, I believe we're in our seventh or eighth year Award Winning Stories in the Sky Children's Preschool Storytelling Program, to our STEM-related exhibits that we're launching and introducing to the community and to visitors from around the world. So our last two exhibits have been very focused on STEM education. So we're really proud of being able to really showcase the ballooning industry and just everything that's innovative about flight for our Albuquerque community as well as for the visitors that come to see us. We do request that the council, in looking at the budget, recognize that we are a significant player for the city and that we bring value to the city, and we, our budget is tight. The foundation does everything we can to raise the revenues and grow the revenues every year, and we're doing that, to support the education programs and the exhibits, but we need your help as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is John Chavis, Marie Coleman, and Pat Sanchez.
Good evening, councilors. My name's John Chavis. I'm vice president of the Anderson Abruzzo Albuquerque International Balloon Museum. Kind of a long-winded way of saying it, but we like to call it the Albuquerque Balloon Museum, and that's why we're here today, for asking for your support of that museum. What Jill just explained is that we're on a growth curve. We're one of the, we're lucky enough to be one of the growth spots in Albuquerque, growing to 140,000 visits. You know, that's more than any of the museum that gets funded, and I have to mention this, three times as much as our museum. We are hardworking, we get down in the dirt and get our hands dirty, our foundation does, and to support the museum. I have to point out inequity in budgeting. Last year, when you took out, the city took out the rentals and the admissions from museums, what that did to us is that took money away from those museums, and at the same time as these museums are growing, both Albuquerque and museum and the balloon museum, they don't have the money to repair the addition, to repair the results and the disrepair that occurs because of the many visitors. We need air conditioning, our air conditioning units are, need new software systems, our parking lot needs to be restriped. These are wear and tear that are occurring on an asset to the city. People visit us and they see our parking lot in disrepair, and we still continue to get more and more visitors. We need your help. We need your help. We need you to look at the budget more precisely. We, the management of the museum proposed a price increase, which was accepted. None of that money was accepted to flow back to us. We have a million-dollar budget for, from the city. It was kept at a million dollars. We were asking for $30,000. Thirty thousand, just to keep the lights on and keep going. We ask that you reconsider that and support the museums, both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Marie Coleman, Pat Sanchez, and Alaska Piper.
Hello. Good evening, councilors. I am Marie Coleman. I own the Church Street Cafe in Old Town, and I'm here to talk to you about public restrooms. We definitely need public restrooms in Old Town. We've been promised them before and it's never happened, and we have some public restrooms in Plaza Don Luis, but it's not sufficient for the crowds that we get, and it's not, it's not sufficient for the people, you know, that come to visit us from all over. I have some property on, at the entrance of Old Town, off of Romero and Rio Grande, which is right at the entrance, and I'm proposing putting some public restrooms there. I'm asking for the same contract that you give Plaza Don Luis. I'd be willing to maintain them and keep them nice and pleasant and a great place for us to send our visitors who desperately need a bathroom. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a moment, please. Counselor Benton?
Yeah, I just want to thank Marie and Trina Martinez, Tammyang Chuwi, for meeting with us, myself and Director Simon. This type of thing, of public toilets is, of course, I've been in the news lately with But, but all kidding aside, it's a difficult problem for cities around the country. You can go to cities where they've built a very, you know, large, expensive public toilet, and the doors are locked and barred, because the city cannot maintain it properly. So, it's a, there's a certain planning element that's really got to be a big part of the decision-making, but I really appreciate Director Simon coming and talking to us about it.
Well, thank you for coming to talk to me yesterday.
Arts Department is only one part of Old Town, but we've got cultural with the museum, and cultural has a long history, our department has there, and as well as planning and transportation. We've got an intersection there with how many, 28,000 cars a day or something crazy like that. There's a lot of, a lot of factors in Old Town, so we've got to work together to continue to improve it, because it is, somebody called something a jewel, that is a jewel, and there's nothing like it, and I always say, I'll put it up against Santa Fe any day of the week. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
I would too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Borrego?
I would just like to know approximately how much each public toilet would cost, if there's a number?
I only know what the one that I bought costs, which was second-hand at $20,000 per unit.
Thank you.
That's probably about right for a building as well.
Next speaker, Pat Sanchez, followed by Alaska Piper and Sean Wells. Good evening.
Good evening, city councilors. My name is Pat Sanchez. I'm a board member with the Albuquerque Balloon Museum. And just to add some color of my fellow board members on the deferred maintenance issues that we are having at the balloon museum. One of the big things, as mentioned, is the HVAC. Like I said, this heats and warms and cools our museum and is currently in need of repair and replacement with a cost of approximately $75,000. And then, the biggest thing is the parking lot. As mentioned, with the number of events that are happening there, there are cracks, there are the stripes, you can no longer see where people need to park, which is a good thing in the sense that it's getting a lot of use from all the other events that are being held there, but these deferred maintenance issues that we're having at the balloon museum really require your consideration for the museum, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alaska Piper, Sean Wells, and Nancy Abruzzo.
Good evening, councilors. 145,000 annual visitors, $1 million in local business sales, $35,000 in nutritional services like EBT and WIC distributed. These are some of the social and economic impacts of the rail yards market, a Sunday farmer's market that is so much more than numbers to me and many others. It's a dynamic hub for connection in our community. We've been gathering steam with the city as a supportive partner, but this year, our nonprofit, free-to-the-public project is not included in the mayor's budget. Last year, we returned 75% of the city funding received back in rent and fees such as permits. We desperately need the city's support to keep our program growing, and we are ready to expand. Our most recent extra-season event, the holiday market, attracted 28,000 visitors in just two days. I humbly request that the rail yards market be restored to the budget, so we can continue to be a partner and grow as a catalyst for revitalization in our city. Madam Chair, councilors, I know you see the value in the market. I see many of you there weekly. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm always happy to chat and dream about the market's potential over coffee, and I hope to see you all this Sunday at 10:00 AM for our opening.
Thank you, Ms. Piper. Councilor?
Madam Chair. Alaska, thank you for your leadership over the last few years. You've really seen it take off and take flight, and like you say, it's a, it's a gathering place for the community. There's so much more to be done. I've heard that the administration is very interested in us, you know, restarting, and I think we're in a good position to do that, but you guys are great, and you know, there, we really have to go ahead and take a look at the next space that's needed, and I think we know where we're going with that, but it's all, it's only money, as we say here at the Budget Committee, so.
Counselor Benton, thank you. We work very hard to make the market an exciting place for the community, and our budget is very small compared to some of these other projects.
Could you remind the councilors of what you, of how much subsidy the rail yards market got from the city over the last two or three years?
Absolutely. We were originally in the budget in 2014 for $50,000. Last year, we were in the budget for $40,000, and we do pay $30,000 to the city in rent, fees, permits, and license agreement contracts.
In addition to, so that's part of the trade-off. Right.
Absolutely. Thank you, councilor.
Well, I mean, the sheer performance is so impressive compared to what the city's been paying, so, councilors, that really, we have an asset here. Granted, it's a very tarnished asset, the whole rail yards as a whole, but nonetheless, it's a, it's a very amazing piece of property and of buildings and so forth, and so I think the rail yards market, what's wonderful about it is not just the market itself, but the ability for people to see what the city owns there and dream their own dreams about, about what it should be, because we're gonna, we're gonna take another hard run at it and see if we can get it off the ground. I think it, it started out during bad economic times, let's face it. Let's just face that. The year that we bought it was when everything crashed, so we need to pick up, pick up, and you guys already have picked up and moved on, so thank you.
Counselor Benton, madam chair, thank you. We, we are prepared at the rail yards market to be an active partner with the administration in helping continue to revitalize the site. We're very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Wells, Nancy Abruzzo, and Tracy Sharp.
Thank you for accommodating the multimedia experience.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Maybe? Maybe not?
My name is Sean Wells-Z Delgado, and I'm a fifth-generation Spanish colonial artist. I show at the annual Spanish market in Santa Fe, and I'm very pleased to be able to provide for my family. Unfortunately, Spanish market only comes once a year, and so I'm always looking for opportunities and events where I can show my artwork and share my culture through my images at events, and the rail yards came along, and I was able to sustain myself as a full-time artist. I credit the rail yards for helping me to be able to transition to a full-time artist. My background's actually in architecture, and I did that for 10 years with my husband until the market crashed in 2008 and I was pregnant. I came back here with hat in hand and no money in the bank, and I had to restart my career as an artist, and with the rail yards help, I've been able to do that in the presentation. I'll just show you this graph. This is a graph of my income since participating in the rail yards. In 2011, my income was $0 from art, and every year since then, I have been able to double my income. In 2016, it was $28,000 specifically from art, and in 2016, it was over $50,000. So I just want to show a tangible number to the fact that rail yards is here fostering and incubating small entrepreneurs like me. When I started this, before rail yards, I was on EBT, also known as food stamps, and having a graduate degree and participated in architecture, taking six figures, it was a huge, huge dignity blow to be on food stamps, and although it served me very well, and I was very glad and grateful to have it, I'm very proud to be able to take care of my family through my art, and I thank rail yards and I thank the staff, especially Alaska, who's the bargain of the century. So, please support this market, because they're supporting people like me who are ready to contribute and give back to the community.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis? And then Counselor Pena?
Sorry, I just want to say thank you. I think that's a great example of exactly the type of economic development we should be investing in in Albuquerque. It's culturally important to us. It's something that can't be exported, because it's about us, and it keeps our money here and it supports each other, and it's a great example of what the rail yards does. Madam Chair, if I can, I just want to ask the CAO very briefly, and I know we'll get into this in another discussion, but can the administration give us a quick overview for folks following along about funding for the rail yards and their perspective on this?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, Counselor Davis, yes, thank you. So, this year, we presented some of the information regarding cultural affairs events in a, in a little different fashion, but when we get to that section of the presentation, we have a memo for the council that details the organizations that, that we would propose funding for this type of event funding, and we'll go over it in detail then, but did want to flag, while these folks are still in the audience, that we have included in our proposal $40,000 for the rail yard, which matches their money from last year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Naher. Counselor Pena?
I was just going to make a comment. Ms. Wells, if everyone knows her, she's just a tremendous artist in our community. She actually has designed, I don't know if you've ever seen those bottles of wine that have, it's a collection with all the Dia de los Muertos on it, and you know, we're, I was talking to her at the South Valley Pride Day this weekend, and she was telling me that they're actually selling on eBay for quite a bit of money, and she was letting me know about the first edition, and the ones I have are the first edition, so, but I just want to say, you're a tremendous artist. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Benton?
Yeah, and just thanks for, for telling your story, because I mean, I think that I've, I think that's been multiplied so many times at the rail yard market, and, and I just also want to, you know, shout out to, to the folks who are working on, on a new Main Street for, for Fourth Street in Borellos, which is just a classic Route 66 street, no, no less than any other of, of the route, and, and the work of the, of the coalition who's working to try to make this a feeder, that the rail yards would actually be a feeder for another market on Fourth Street, so good things happening and because of good people working, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Next speaker is Nancy Abruzzo, followed by Tracy Sharp and Terry Neville.
Hello, councilors. I'm Nancy Abruzzo, and I sit on the Board of Trustees for the Balloon Museum. I'm here for twofold reasons. First and foremost, it's in regards to our admission increase that has taken place for the very first time since the inception of the balloon museum, and we feel strongly that this increase And we feel strongly that this increase would be a direct benefit to the museum. And so I stand here respectfully asking you for your reconsideration of those potential increase in admission prices directly back to the museum. As it's been spoke to earlier here tonight, our attendance record has a very strong track record. It has had traction over... Every year, it increases, and it exceeds the estimates that we peg in admissions. And so while I understand the grocery receipts tax increase has passed, it would be a windfall and such a benefit for the museum and its staff to have access to the potential of $54,000 that's projected in the increase of the admission costs. Our cost went from $1 to $4. Our original cost was $1 to $4, and we increased it to $3 to $6 respectively. So a relatively minor increase. The second half is those long-term deferred maintenance that were discussed earlier. Our H V A C control panel, I think you'll find that if we get that addressed, we might actually save some money in our utility bill. And the deferred maintenance on our parking lot is something that we certainly like to get in the pipeline sooner rather than later. So thank you for your time and your reconsideration of that potential income.
Thank you, Ms. Abruzzo. Next speaker, Tracy Sharp, followed by Teri Neville and Andian Schicktel, I think. And I'm sure I murdered that. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Tracy Sharp, and I am here as the Executive Director for Serenom. It's a nonprofit organization that works with families experiencing homelessness and does not receive any city funding or government funding at all. But I'm here in support of adding funding to the Family and Community Services section of the budget because I see the great need for the families of our community in the housing and homeless services. Of course, that's the demographic that I'm serving. But for the families that are in our programming, accessing resources in the community centers and child development centers, and the social services and health resources are phenomenally important. And so I'm here in support of increasing the funding to that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeremy Rutherford will be our next and last speaker. Good evening. And tell me how I pronounce your name?
No, I'm not the Schicktel. I'm Neville.
You're Neville?
Schicktel.
Okay.
After me.
All right. Neville, Teri, please go forward.
Hi there.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm Teri Neville, and I'm requesting an amendment to the budget to increase funding for family... For planning projects for new or renovated parks. And I believe it's part of the sustainable community development. So I say, what's good? Albuquerque's already leading neighboring large cities and other states in park acreage as a percent of city area. Albuquerque has a high rating from the Trust for Public Lands and regarding the same measure as far as area. So what's missing? Well, they're almost empty. Why? Because they're boring. The same mass-produced plastic playsets result in packaged imagination. These have replaced the interesting places where unstructured play is sparked by free exploration of natural places. Also creates social inequality and inaccessibility the way that our parks are situated now. We have those interesting places like the Rio Grande Valley State Park, the Sandy Mountains, and the petroglyphs of the West Mesa. Visiting these places requires an automobile and family commitment. It becomes an issue of disenfranchisement and social inequality. So what we need to do, and we need children to be outside, and we need them outside daily. So what I'm advocating for is parks and recreation. The city council and the mayor can increase funding to the parks to identify, plan, and implement restructuring of the city parks and open spaces. And I believe this can be done by a network of connecting passages from neighborhoods, their own homes, to parks that will allow children to get outdoor, in outdoor play spaces. This would empower a generation of independent and healthy citizens for the future.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming in. Yes, just a moment. Counselor Benton?
No real question. I just want to thank you for all your advocacy on behalf of this issue. And you know, the entire need... It's an interesting argument, right? That you have to travel to some of our best open space. Some of our parks are... You know, we've been suffering. And even our park system has been paying a lot of money to the Water Authority for water because of antiquated systems. And of course, that's a long history in and of itself. But I really appreciate the point and that experiencing the outdoors is something I took for granted as a kid. And I can see how it would be harder to take advantage of now.
Yeah. It's the... Those of us over 60 know what it feels like to be able to go outside as a child and have those memories that are very real, where we were in a touchable landscape. We could touch our landscape. But we're not allowed to play with mud, go under bushes, climb trees, not in these landscapes that we have available to us today. So appreciate your time.
Just a sec. Counselor Davis?
Ms. Neville, I just want to thank you for bringing this to us earlier. I know we... I appreciate our email conversation earlier.
Yes.
We're gonna take a look at all of this with Mr. Simon, our new Director of Parks. But I also, and I appreciate this, I just want to get it on the record. I encourage you and other folks like this to engage with our Parks and Rec Board. We've appointed some new folks there that help advise the Parks and Rec Department on planning parks and doing that work. And I think this is an excellent place to engage them and get some buy-in to a new process. And that certainly will be a key component of us changing our process for that. And I encourage you to talk to them so that we're working from both sides.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Just a sec. Counselor Borrego?
I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. This morning, I visited one of the parks in my district. And I came to find that it was not handicap accessible, and it was not even accessible. It was on a hill and a slope. And I'm gonna be working on that particular park. I won't mention the name right now. But you know, also, not just children, but also seniors, especially when they're healing or they're in some sort of...
Right.
You know, they've been hospitalized. Being in the outdoors helps them to heal. So I very much appreciate that you brought this forward.
And like you say, you know, the people need this kind of diversity, too. You know, to see and feel the dappled shade over the rim of the trees. But they also need to walk through bushes and touch plants. And especially for the handicapped, it's really important, right, to modify these places. And children need to be able to pick up sticks and look underneath dirt and soil and leaves. They need to feel all of that. And it's good for their gut.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming in. One more, ma'am. Counselor Harris has a question.
It's more of a comment. You can come up if you'd like. We actually are changing, to a degree, some of the ways we're thinking about parks in the city of Albuquerque. And we have a fairly new park in my district at Four Hills Park. And what the Parks Department did in Four Hills Park is they have these huge boulders in the middle of the park, and they're very sharp. And I was like, well, this, kids could get hurt on this. And the new view about these parks is that you want kids to like, take risks.
Yes.
Okay. And there's like this invitation, like climb all over these rocks. And some of them are kind of sharp and looking and big. And kids are crawling all over them all the time. So it's not... So in the way the park is set up, kids go from one place to another. They have the swings and play equipment. But then the park is very interactive itself. So I think we're starting to look at that. And maybe we do have to accept that maybe some plants will get damaged sometimes. Maybe that's something we have to look at.
Exactly. We've invested so much money into plants and like you say, watering them. I mean, let's break up some of this a little bit. Let it just happen. And you'd be surprised what does remain. And also, these plants, if you put in the native plants, they're used to browsers. You know, the deer that come by, the native plants that we have here, which also fit in well with the native pollinators. So it's all a system that we've kind of ignored. Well, we can bring in some Mediterranean plants, too, and feel there because those guys are always gonna be green, but...
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your passion.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Schicktel, and then Jeremy Rutherford.
Ms. Schicktel.
Ma'am, I have your name wrong in every way. My apologies.
I'm used to it. It's all right.
Thank you.
My name's Andian Schicktel.
Thank you.
My name's Andian Schicktel. And what I have up here is just examples of exactly what Teri was talking about. They are things that kids have used their imaginations to create out of sticks that they found. I'm an educator for the Water Utility Authority. I'm contracted with them. I also help run a forest kindergarten in the Bosque with Teri. So we get to see firsthand risky behavior and how beneficial it is and how amazing these kids are when they come out of it. Not only from their imaginations of making paintbrushes and wands out of a stick or a crown, but they develop these incredible character skills that almost can't be taught in a classroom. And then they really learn how to appreciate where they're from and take care of it in a very organic manner. And we do need to restructure city parks that not every kid can get out to these cool places or be in a program that we have. And that's really unfortunate. There's so much science-based evidence that I could go through a list that encourages social interaction and independent thinkers, increased imaginative creative play, reduce ADHD, reduce obesity, reduce stress, higher test scores. They're happier children. They have better cognitive ability in the long run. And I'd be happy to work with Teri and your Park and Rec's development design people to fix our parks. And I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your coming in. Jeremy Rutherford is our last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors, I'm Jeremy Rutherford. I'm also here on behalf of the Albuquerque Anderson Abruzzo International Balloon Museum. I represent them at the state, at the legislature. Also ballooning, all things ballooning in Albuquerque and New Mexico are very near and dear to my family. When I'm asking for capital outlay up at the legislature, one of the first things I'm asked is, is this on the city's plan? And it obviously usually is not. And I'd like to encourage you to find a way to, if not put these things on your plan, to find a way to endorse these things with your local legislators so that they know that the city does support them. I want to point out that over the last 25 years of the Balloon Museum, legislators from Torrance, Valencia, Sandoval, Santa Fe, and Burnley County have all given money towards the museum for capital outlay needs. This is a big deal, and the legislators know it, the state knows it. I would also like to ask you, not as capital needs, but some of the things the Balloon Museum needs from the city now. They need a volunteer coordinator. They don't have one on staff right now. A volunteer coordinator brings exponential results because then you get free people coming in and working at the museum just for the joy of it. They also need to expand their educational programs. They're sort of maxed out right now. More funding. They could do things 365 if they had the funding to do it. There's just that much interest in everything they do there. It's not just ballooning. There's all kinds of programs that take place there. Drones, Renaissance, all kinds of things. They also need to improve their visitor services and building operations. The attendance is growing. Their collections are growing. They need to maintain their collections to work towards accreditation. They have amazing collections. What they really need is conservation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I believe that's our last speaker for the evening. So next on the agenda, we will be hearing from Sanjay Bhakta, the Chief Financial Officer, followed by Gerald Romero, the Budget Officer. Good evening, Mr. Bhakta.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. I'm excited to be here. This is something we have been working hard, and I want to recognize our support staff here, especially Jerry Romero, the Budget Officer, and his support staff, the professional staff. They have been working hard. I'm amazed at their professionalism, their institutional knowledge, historical knowledge, and also their commitment and willingness to share that knowledge with us and make this happen for us. Today, we will be talking about overall budget at a high level. And then we will discuss in detail the social goals, departments. All the directors are here. But I'll give you certain highlights of the budget, especially the Hold Harmless 3.8 tax and how we are going to use that. As you know, the 3.8 grocery tax was approved and enacted in March 2018. It takes effect on July 1st. The staff had been working with TRD to make sure that they have it in place. So I think logistically, they are ready. The tax would be collected beginning August for the activity of July. And we will begin to receive that in September. So for the first year, we will get the revenue of 11 months, which would be approximately $49.6 million. Of that, we would be able to use about $45.5 million. The rest, which is 1/12, needs to be reserved. This is the pie chart for this $45.5 million revenue related to hold harmless portion. Of that, 80% would be used on the public safety. 15% would be used on increase in the healthcare cost. This is the city's portion on the healthcare cost. And also, we are helping the employees by giving 1% raise, which we are counting as a healthcare cost because that is for them to defray their portion of the healthcare premiums. There is also this 5% loss of hold harmless. It is actually 6% phase out, which translates into about $2.3 million. So that is that gap which this new tax will help us fill. As far as the public safety, I'll give you some highlights. Of $45.5 million, we will use 80% for the public safety in our community. The mayor and this administration's intent is to address crime from every possible angles. We believe that council also has similar vision based on the legislation that passed 821 to increase this revenue. Council unanimously approved an amendment to the grocery tax legislation that considered crime prevention as a component of public safety. The council also voted to use no less than 60% of the proceed for public safety. And as you will see, we exceed that requirement, and we have allocated 80% of that to the public safety. So primarily, the administration developed the budget with these two amendments in mind. We believe this budget reflects council's objectives identified in Ordinance 18-9. And this budget reflects the mayor's vision of attacking crime from all sides, including initiatives aimed at addressing our community's struggles with homelessness, mental health challenges, addiction, education, and domestic violence. Crime prevention and intervention includes investing in our children. The mayor has allocated... This is just one of the examples from the list, which we'll see in the next slide. The mayor has allocated $954,000 for family and community services, parks and recreation, cultural services departments, to double the total number of students who are kept off the streets and out of harm's way through before-school... and out of harm's way through before school, after school, and summer and early childhood programming. In addition to the budget, the administration has instructed our directors to work together to address public safety on all fronts and they are working together. Our chiefs and directors understand that we are one city, not 22 or so different departments and they need to leverage their resources to improve the safety of our community. This is a list of the portion of the new tax revenue, of which 80% is allocated to public safety. I will not go into details of all of this because when we have the detailed discussion on the department's budget, the directors would talk about it. However, certain items I would like to highlight is from this, majority of the items are allocated to either APD or the fire department. The first and the major alliance portion is $12.8 million, which includes a reserve appropriation for 14 new officers plus funding for salaries, benefits to be used in a compensation package intended to retain officers, hire new officers, and attract lateral officers. So, this total package would add about 100 police officers in fiscal year 2019. The other item, a major item here, is $4 million for the police vehicles. We have an aging fleet at APD. Not only that, with the new officers that we are going to recruit, there will be need for more vehicles. This $4 million will supplement $800,000 that we are going to get from the state, which they appropriated in the last budget cycle. We will get that in July. And it also will add to about $3.2 million, which we had in the 2017 GO bond. And the first of that GO bond, first of those $125 million, we sold the bonds in the beginning of April for $84 million. And from that, $3.2 million is allocated for the vehicles. So, we believe that this $4 million plus $3.2 million and $800,000 will help the APD to, the need to replace the vehicles and add some new vehicles. $2.3 million is related to DOJ court-approved settlement agreement. There is a total of 12 positions. Nine of them are new and that is to comply with the DOJ settlement. $1.9 million is to address the backlog at the crime lab. I think this is a good messaging. The criminals should know that we are analyzing the data and that would help us tackle the crime. There is also $1.2 million for the new technology projects related to fighting crime as outlined by DTI in three-year plan. As you are aware, we had folks visiting from New York Police Department and they also looked at this plan and I think this is something similar to what they have. So, this should help to tackle the crime. Last but not least from this list is $102,000 for Safe City Strike Force. This is for the planning department to sort of identify the houses which needs repair, which needs to be boarded up. So, this would help our public safety initiative. I would like to discuss some outlook related to economy in the next few slides. The total employment growth rate, as you can see here, is barely about 1% right now. And traditionally, we have been lagging with the federal growth rate. In Albuquerque area, the employment growth rate is the driving factor for the economic growth. And it's been stagnant. I see that we are actually going to do slightly better in our projection compared to the US federal growth rate. However, it may be because of sometime we lag into the growth and we are a little bit behind when the trend is declining. We are slightly behind the federal trend here. However, this is not very optimistic picture. This also tells us that we have an issue with our population. I think we have a very minimal population growth, which is primarily attributed to the difference between the death and the newborn, which is just a natural growth and that's not sufficient for any economy to kind of thrive. But if we somehow can grow the economy, I think the employment will grow and then we will be able to attract more people. But we had a huge spike in 70s and 80s and I believe those days are behind us unfortunately. The next slide, there is some comparison of historical grocery tax base. And we have used the data of that 1% which we get from the state because that is the constant component within the grocery tax amount that we receive. The other components changes with change in the tax rate. But this is pretty good data to compare. And as you can see, we had a humongous spike in '79 and then early 80s and mid 80s. But we haven't quite recovered from the recession of 2008. It's been, the growth had been very muted. Again, if you actually look at the real data with inflation-adjusted rate, the actual growth is barely above zero, just about 1%, which kind of validates the other data we have on the population and also the employment growth. So, I just want to caution the council moving forward. We will have to be very prudent even though we have additional revenue through the hold harmless new legislation. I think the outlook is pretty muted. The only thing I can brag about is it's just above zero. But there is nothing else to brag about here unfortunately. So, we need to really focus on economic growth to kind of drive the revenue base here. The next slide, we have the growth of grocery tax base for the current year. As you can see, the distribution, which is the actual distribution we receive from TRD, is in the red and that's very volatile. And that is, as we all know, they have issues there with reconciliations and clawback. So, it's very difficult to predict what we will get next month. However, if you look at the cumulative growth, again, initially, I think in our five-year plan, our growth expectation was about 2.3%, which we revised to 1.7%. And right now, we are trending at 1.2%. So, that's not really good news. However, we have three good months coming and there is a time to catch up. And our economist is actually pretty optimistic that we will catch up. In the next slide, we have the grocery tax growth by the sector. This is a kind of interesting slide. We have consistent growth in accommodations, the hotels and the food services, which is good. It's been like that for more than a year now. The construction is also doing really well. The two things to consider here is that the food service and lodging industry growth is good. We will take it. But they really don't create high-paying jobs. You know, these are just low-level jobs. And the construction is good. However, it's generally one time and the jobs created in construction industry tend to be not permanent. Though it's good, I don't know how long it will continue like that. The one thing which is troubling here is the medical hold harmless. There is a decline of almost 28%, which sort of doesn't make sense because the healthcare is up by 6% and the medical is somewhat related field. It should have same growth. That said, if the healthcare was 6%, if the healthcare growth was 6%, medical because of the hold harmless could be zero and I would actually accept it because the 6% is the phase-out portion. But instead of 6%, it's almost minus 28. So, there is something wrong in how we are getting the money. It could be an issue at the TRD, which we have discussed in past. Or it could be also a reporting issue. Same like food as well where if the things are growing, why would food not grow? Which is, which kind of beats me. And Councillor Davis actually had a very good suggestion a couple of months ago that we identify the grocers, retailers, and educate them. So, I want to report to you that we did that. We figured out how to communicate with them and we wanted to let TRD know that we want to do this and we need your blessings and they are not happy about it. And they think that we will confuse the taxpayers. They have a little bit of a point. And they are also saying, not in writing though, they spoke to our economist and said that they are doing certain things. They have identified certain taxpayers and they are working with them and they know that there is an issue with the reporting. So, hopefully, you know, that would be fixed. Our Deputy Director of Finance and Administration, Olivia, wrote an email to them that, can you give this to us in writing and kind of give us a high-level outline of what exactly you are doing? I haven't seen the response yet. But we'll see. We will continue to monitor this.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt. Mr. Bhakta, thank you for following up. You beat me to it. I wrote that note. I was going to ask the progress on talking to our grocers mainly about the appropriate use of hold harmless. Can you just clarify for me? Sounds like you were working with TRD. Have we done any of that education yet or we're trying to be good partners with TRD first, right? To be sure we're doing that together? Is that what I understand?
Councillor Davis, we actually have a communication, a memo, kind of on a postcard, which was about to go to the grocers. But we wanted to check that box. We didn't want to surprise TRD. It was kind of, you know.
The way they do us sometimes.
Protocol to let them at least know. And generally, they don't respond quickly. But when we told them that we are going to do this, they actually responded very quickly and said that, don't do it right now because they are doing certain things. So, we are going to give them an opportunity to explain to us what they are doing and if that's fine. And we also said that we stand ready to help you educate people, anything you can do.
Mr. Bhakta, thank you for taking the initiative to do that for your team as well. I know, long-term, that'll pay off for the city in fair revenues and hopefully in this back-and-forth sort of we have with them. So, thank you and thanks for giving us an update.
And I appreciate that suggestion. Thank you for that. In the next slide, we have adjustment to the grocery sits. This is sort of a reconciliation of the growth rate without the adjustment, which is 2.3 to adjusted rate of 1.7 because there is this food and medical hold harmless portion which we are reducing. And then in future years, we also have this tax increment development district reduction, which is a slight decrease. So, that will impact our total revenue. Again, you know, this growth rate of 1.7 to 2.2 in FY '19 and 2.5 is kind of muted. And I wish that it would be more and we will work on it. With that, Madam Chair and Councillor, I thank you for your time and I'm going to hand over to Jerry, who would go into the details of each department's appropriation. And we are all here to answer your questions at the end of it. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Bhakta. I think there might be a few questions for you first. Councillor Davis?
I promise it's not all me tonight. Mr. Bhakta, just can you clarify for me? I know the administration is proposing and is budgeting for a 2% across-the-board increase, except for bargaining units with a different concept. But I also heard you mention that, if I got this right, part of, of course, increasing our healthcare premiums means we take 80%. Our employees still pay their 20%. And so, was that about a 1% that I heard you say? And I think I'm trying to ask, are we giving, is the administration recommending a 2% that is in reality a 1% because of the compensated premium? Or is it really a 3% that results to 2%?
No, it is 2. It is 1 plus 1. So, the first 1% we are considering that to help them defray the cost of their portion of increase in the health premium. And then other 1% is just, and then 1% is an approximate amount we think will defray cost for, I would say, you know, 90% of the employees.
Thank you. And Mr. Bhakta, Madam Chair, if I could follow up. In the proposal that the administration has set aside for bargaining units negotiations, some of which is, some of which is larger, some of which is sort of more on par there, are you accommodating for that 1% in the recommendations there? Or is that simply an extra chunk for them to work out? They would have to accommodate the 1% in their recommended budget allowance?
Councillor Davis, before I put my foot in the mouth, I think.
We can follow up later.
Ms. Nyar had been kind of working on this area and.
And we can come back to it later as we get to negotiations. Those are different and it's up to the subject of negotiation. I'm just curious if you had accommodated for that or not. Thank you.
Ms. Nyar, would you like to answer that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Davis, so of course, as everyone up here knows, any of the phrases related to a bargaining unit need to be subject to those negotiations. So, if you're asking about police and fire and whether that is sort of in the mix, I think all of those things are being taken into account as we negotiate those contracts.
Thank you, ma'am. And Councillor Borrego?
Sanjay, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to ask you, and I want to go back to table 5 and kind of back to the recession and sort of our recovery. And it seems like we've only sort of leveled out at this point in time with the 1%. And I appreciate your comment regarding, you know, be cautious because I think that, you know, after a recession, I mean, we know that there are trends that go up and down. And, you know, I think that that comment is very, I mean, it could go either way. And I know you don't have a magic, you know, crystal ball. But I guess the question that I'm asking is, do you anticipate that, you know? I mean, historically, it shows that when there's a recession, that the market goes up and down. And, you know, we've only recovered in what I think 2009, maybe not quite 10 years. And, you know, the future is sort of in limbo a little bit right now, I think. And, you know, I know that the growth in Albuquerque has been low, significantly low. You mentioned that. So, I'm just kind of wondering what your thoughts are. I mean, you do this on a regular basis. I don't. So, I'd like to kind of hear your, kind of your thoughts regarding that and maybe some of what the economists are telling you for New Mexico.
Madam Chair and Councillor Borrego, that's an excellent question. As I think you answered my question, I don't have the crystal ball. That said, I think traditionally, you know, our staff is very proud of how we gather the data. We have very credible sources for this data and generally, there is not much deviation from this outlook. However, the one thing which hasn't been considered in this is that, especially. However, the one thing which hasn't been considered in this is that, especially in the Albuquerque statistical, yeah, area, you know, there is an impact on the economy with the perception of the public safety issue, which, you know, doesn't attract businesses, therefore, it doesn't create employment, therefore, it doesn't contribute to the growth. With enhanced focus on public safety, personally, I'm optimistic that that will change. And hopefully, that would have some impact in a very positive and meaningful way that this growth will be slightly more than what's been projected.
I guess, just to follow up on that, I guess my question is, or my concern, rather, is with regards to goods and services, and, you know, how that impacts our future. And it seems to be trending in a positive way, but, you know, that's yet to be seen. And, you know, are we sort of in inflation? I mean, have we gone into that phase, or are we kind of staying away from that?
Counselor Borrego, no, we are coming out of recession, only it's very muted numbers that I see when you come out of the recession, you know, as I mentioned before, we are lagging. But I don't think this is a recession. We are certainly out of that.
Asking is inflation.
Inflation, no, I don't think so. As you see in one of the slides, that our growth is about 2 percent, I think it's Slide number 6, and then the real, the growth is about 2 percent, and then it is projected that there would be a gap of about 2 percent between the nominal number and the inflation-adjusted numbers. And that 2 percent growth, that 2 percent gap, rather, is the inflation rate. And that 2 percent is actually, I would say, healthy inflation rate, and that's expected, yeah, over the years, yeah.
My question. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bakhter. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll go with Gerald Romero, the Budget Officer, with the continued presentation.
Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll stay here since I'm set up. So I'm just going to hit a few highlights of the overall budget in the first few slides, and then we'll move on to individual departments. If it's okay with you, we'll have one slide per department, and I'll ask if you would like to have the director up for questions, and then we'll go on to the next slide after those questions and answers are done, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
I think that would be perfect, Mr. Romero. Thank you.
Okay. On this slide, it's an overall picture in two pie charts of the fiscal year 19 budget. So this would be all funds. You've only seen some of them tonight, mostly general fund, as you know, and mentioned earlier, at the next Cal meeting, we will have the enterprise funds, which include airport and transit and solid waste. The overall budget right now is balanced with recurring revenues actually in excess of recurring expenses, which is a good thing, as we look to hire even more police officers in fiscal year '20 and in the out-years of our forecast. After eliminations of inter-fund transfers, the overall operating budget stands now at $995 million, so we're almost a billion-dollar operating, operation here, something I think, counselors, you can, you can put on your resumes someday saying you oversaw a billion-dollar budget. It'll get to a billion next year for certain. And this does not include the capital program, so this is just all the operating funds, so. I'm certainly going to put it on my resume someday. Resources, so the resources right now, if you look at all funds once again, grocery receipts tax still makes up a pretty good portion. And I can't see my own slide. I believe it's about 34 percent, if that's, if that's correct. Property tax is almost 16 percent, when you include the pieces that go to the debt service. And then we've got, of course, enterprise revenues that bring in about 15 percent of the overall sources of funds. We do use fund balance from prior years, which makes up some of it as departments underspend, or we have additional revenue that's used in the subsequent year primarily for non-recurring expenses. In terms of how we spend it, we mostly spend it on personnel, as you're fully aware. It's a very labor-intensive operation to run government. Almost 50 percent of our expenses go to personnel. Here's an overall view of the general fund appropriations, comparing fiscal year '18 to fiscal year '19. The budget, primarily because of the 3/8s tax that was passed, will grow by $44.5 million. Once again, this is just the general fund. You can see in this table, we do have some changes, some pretty significant changes between departments. Those are mostly driven by reorganizations, and we'll talk about some of those as we get to the individual departments. If we look at just the general fund once again, you can see police and fire make up nearly 48 percent of the overall budget. All other departments are about 53 percent. So police at 33 percent of appropriations, and fire at 14 percent. Other highlights in this budget is $5.2 million for the city's portion of the increase in the employer contribution toward health care, compensation, as we've talked about. The increase is about 2 percent for most employees, 1 percent to offset the increase in health care premiums, and then 1 percent colo. Compensations higher than 2 percent, as Ms. Nyar mentioned, will be targeted in negotiations for certain unions. We have $3.6 million to restore the risk recovery, and half a million for facilities coming online, including Los Altos Pool and North Domingo Baca Jim. We do have $2 million in for the National Senior Games, which will take place at the tail end of fiscal year '19. We have $1.2 million in municipal development for various positions, including a regional transportation management center, a sidewalk ADA coordinator, and agency coordination for storm drainage. $1.1 million for an increase in the subsidy to the gas tax road fund, $300,000 to address the latest increase in the minimum wage, which is something we hadn't been addressing in recent budgets, but that's slowly been creeping up, and we do have some, did have some compression issues, so we are addressing that primarily in family and community services and parks. We do have an increase in the subsidy for golf of $349,000, and a $3.9 million reserve to add a growth class of police officers in the coming year. In addition to the increase of 3/8s, of 1 cent in GRT, we do have an additional $710,000 proposed from fee increases at various venues across the city. We have Albuquerque Museum and the balloon museum entrance. We expect to generate an additional $137,000 from those increases. There's a special exhibit entrance at the Albuquerque Museum of 200, we expect to generate about $250,000, and the director will talk about that when we get to that slide. Senior centers, adult memberships, we're proposing an increase of $5, which we expect to generate $100,000. Family and Community Services will implement a new adult membership fee. We're working that out, and we'll talk about that on those individual departments as well. We expect that to generate about $64 million. Increase in erosion and sediment control plan fees, generating $14,000. Inspection for storm water control, expected to raise $44,000. And finally, lean processing fees, $101,000. So here's a list of the departments up tonight. They're not in alphabetical order. We're going to sort of tackle the big ones first, and like I mentioned, Madam Chair, we'll go ahead and do police first, and then we'll call the chief up to stand for questions. So the police general fund budget is proposed at $190,162,000. There are 1,560 positions, that includes sworn and civilian. The fiscal year '19 budget increases by $19.6 million and includes the following. There's an increased recruitment and retention effort through pay incentives, which we've talked a little bit about, reinstating recurring and additional funding to comply with the Department of Justice settlement agreement, and to ensure timely and proper implementation of all the reforms. There's recurring funding now for the property crime reduction program. It was non-recurring in the current year, and we've added an additional eight positions. Those would be classified, the PSA II positions, as you're aware. There's also funding to address the sexual assault kit and latent fingerprint backlog. This includes funding for four new positions in police. And there's additional support staff to assist at 911, the call center. There's also positions to process cases and get them ready for the district attorney's office to ensure more successful prosecution of criminals, and also the implementation of community policing. And lastly, in police, we have a highlight of one-time funding of $4 million for vehicle replacement, as Mr. Bakhter mentioned earlier. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and call up Chief Guyer. We have several people in the audience that can answer questions that maybe I can't answer or the chief can't answer, so.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Chief Guyer, welcome this evening. Counselors, are there any questions? Let's start with Counselor Davis.
Chief, good evening. Thanks so much
Good evening, Counselor.
for being here. I know we have a set aside for new, in reserve for a new police class, or what a bumper class, whatever we're going to call it. Do you know when that class expects to be filled and seated, so that, you know, will you need the full 3-9 for the full year? When do you expect that to come on, those officers to actually come online?
Well, obviously, we're in the finishing stages of that recruitment process.
Yes, sir.
I believe we have, we're shooting for a goal of 50. We have a number of qualified candidates already seated. I think it's in the amount of 33, 34. I can get you those exact figures, with a number of qualified candidates that are still in various stages of the, either the background or testing process itself. That class, please, is in the middle of June, is when they'll be actually started. So that's the best I can do. The other class that we have right now in session graduates May 24, I believe.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Chief, the proposed budget is going to be $190,162,000, which is an increase of $19.6 million. Based on the number of officers that we're going to hire, police officers that we're going to hire, it's saying 1,040 police officers. Are we going to be able to get to that number this fiscal year? And there's also called the FTEs that are in there, and they're saying that's going to be 6 percent, so that reduces that number by about 62 officers. But my concern is, we raised taxes to assure the public that we were going to try to keep Albuquerque safe, and that we were going to hire police officers for the, for this coming fiscal year and the next two or three fiscal years. Are we going to be able to attain the numbers in this coming fiscal year to 1,040 minus the FTEs of 62?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, our goal is a part of a long-term plan, obviously, a four-year plan. I think the projections that we are looking for is, we're at 880 now. We'd like to be at 980, 1,000 at the end of fiscal year, this fiscal year '19. Obviously, I can't make guarantees, because we have classes that start with 50 and end with 25. In some cases, people drop out or are eliminated from the process. But our goal is to do that. I think with a good contract with the city, with the APOA, I think with efforts, the new recruitment efforts that we have, which include the retention bonuses and potential referral bonus program, I think with other efforts in terms of trying to find pipelines in the community, even starting younger, as some of the younger we have with the public safety initiatives, we're going to be mentoring and working with young kids as well. We're proposing an Explorer Scout program. We're in the process right now of developing a satellite academy with CNM, getting that approved through the Department of Public Safety, and what that would do is give us an opportunity, obviously, our academy is now 28 weeks, so to run two academies in one year actually goes over that calendar year period. What that would do is be able to get people into the system early, say, the first 16 weeks of the academy in the satellite process, and we would be able to take them at that point for the next 10 weeks. Conceivably, we could run four of those academies in the upcoming years, once that started. It's very optimistic. We have a good number of people that I think will come in as laterals. We've changed a little bit of the, you know, the efforts in terms of trying to attract laterals, recruiting them with different incentives, and just with the status of the department, I think the culture has changed so that people are willing to come back to APD. Before, in the last couple of years, we've heard comments to the effect that even APD officers didn't recommend their family members to be part of APD. They recommend that they go to other departments. That has changed, and I think we're going to see more people coming in. We've already seen that. We've seen an increase of laterals this year, even well and above what they received all last year. So something's changing. Again, Counselor, I want to be hopelessly optimistic as best I can. I think that we're bringing a new avenue to the department that will, again, increase that staffing, and will also, at the top end, will retain more people as well, which is a part of the goal.
And one of the things that this council did in the previous budget is we increased the number of PSA I's and also the PSA II's. I can see the numbers increasing for the PSA II's, but not the PSA I's, and your PSA I's are those individuals that will become Albuquerque police officers that will work their way into the police department. Are we going to look at increasing or keeping those numbers the same for PSA I's?
We'd like to. I think they will reduce, and I can check with our budget people. I know the transfer of the PSA I's that we're not going to have, you know, asked for this year, were transferred to the PSA II, so that we can maintain that. Part of that was the recurring. We asked for those additional numbers for that. The PSA II program, it's not part of the pipeline directly. Obviously, PS, the PSAs are the ones that are going through it. In this current class, we have several, you know, for example, Counselor. We'd like to, but I don't think it was a priority figure right now. We have a pretty good number of PSAs. As we look and expand the program, I think that will be an initiative we will pursue.
And one more question. I like a lot of things that are incorporated into this budget, but also looking at laterals that we're trying to recruit, are we going to have the incentive program available for those laterals in year one, or are we going to wait?
I'm going to defer that, because that adds to a contractual issue that's
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez.
Yes, please.
Short answer is yes. Of course, we are not at liberty to discuss the details of the negotiations at this point, but there is going to be a form of pay that will be directed towards lateral recruitment as well as retention of folks in that sort of 18-year range where we're seeing folks leave right now. And also, the referral bonus program that we're proposing that is outside of the contract that would be available to anybody in the city, city government who makes a referral of somebody who actually gets through and becomes a sworn officer, could apply to laterals as well. So we definitely understand the need to target laterals in addition to new recruits. Also, the way that we've structured the funding in the budget, there's sort of that $3.9 million reserve for 40 new additional officers. Those are really targeted at new recruits, because that's sort of what they're priced at. But the other money for the other officers are at all different levels, because they're the vacancies essentially, and so that gives us the capacity within, in the budget that we've proposed, to bring on laterals in addition to new recruits.
And basically, of the $45.5 million that we are going to generate in revenues with the tax increase, that equates to about 43 or 44.5 percent of that money going to the Albuquerque Police Department. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, you have a question?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still looking at that last bullet point, the $3.9 million reserve for the growth class. Can you give me an idea of where that, what's in that $3.9 million?
Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, I think I refer that Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, I think I refer that as well to the CAO.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, that is essentially the cost of forty new officers hired at, like, a just recent recruit level. And so that.
Salaries, then?
That's right.
Okay.
Salaries and benefits.
Yes, it's assuming twenty-eight dollars an hour plus fringe benefits and a reserve.
All right. Well, and thank you for adding that second class, that growth class. It's really important to do that. Also, how are we recruiting for new hires? I know you talked a little bit about laterals, and I have seen billboard, or more than one billboard, north of, north of the city on I-25. But are there any other things that we're doing to recruit?
Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, yes, we are. We have a new recruitment strategy. We reviewed, did a study with the city in terms of where we're losing people. We get a lot of interest online. Our line is our best bet right now to reach out to the, in this day and age of social media, that's where most of the candidates will first get acquainted to the Albuquerque Police Department. From there, we're looking at a recruitment video. We're looking at actually off-site testing, going to areas. We know there's parts of the country right now where there's not many jobs for police officer candidates, especially in areas where they have satellite academies that young men and women are going through, coming out, and there's no jobs. We're going to be focusing on targets like that. We always will continue focusing on military, especially as they're exiting, return to exit interviews of their own careers. We'll be doing off-site testing, which will help with out-of-state candidates. And then, obviously, all the basic job fairs and trying to deal with the local colleges, especially, like I said, our partnership with CNM is critical to that. That's a big pipeline. But even going further with the explorers, we're talking in high school and making that presence so that we can keep those people as good candidates. So that's the bottom end with recruiting, is that's the many, many areas of pipelines that we're going to try to, you know, kind of reach out through as many avenues as we can.
Okay, thank you. You know, I've said before several times, and I'd really love to see us put more energy into recruiting from college campuses, you know, whether they, probably giving a preference to wherever they offer criminology degrees or something of that like. But even a liberal arts college or university, starting in the state of New Mexico or maybe regionally, but that's how other places do it, corporations.
It's part of the strategy. Obviously, the criminal justice programs in New Mexico with partnerships with, you know, the State University and UNM, which is right here, are crucial. But we know that there's criminal justice programs in surrounding states, too, that are a pipeline to other agencies that, again, we can't just deal with local. The candidate pool here is limited, obviously, not just in the city but in the state. So you're absolutely right, Counselor. I agree with you, is to kind of broaden. And we will actually go out there and do testing out there, which would make the process easier rather than to have a candidate make several trips to this. So we can get a two-day per testing process where our people go out off-site and conduct that testing. They may only have to come back and make one trip before they make a final decision.
Right, right. So there's, and I'm sure you've seen, I'm sure there've been lots of studies, but I'm most familiar with the one that was done at University of Michigan where they showed that even a little tiny bit of college experience makes a big difference in the police officer's likelihood for success. And so we know where they get that education. We've got maps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. May I make a correction to an answer I gave earlier?
Yes, you may.
Sorry, pardon the interruption. Counselor Sanchez, you asked about the percentage to APD. I got a little numeric dyslexia. It's actually fifty-four percent, not forty-five percent. Thank you.
And that's just to police, correct?
Yes, twenty-five point five to Albuquerque Police.
Thank you. And one more. Counselor Benjen, you have a question?
Yes, Chief. So recognizing, you know, recruiting is highly competitive, right? I like what I'm hearing from you about some of your ideas of going to these areas where, sadly, perhaps they're in decline, and they've got people who want to be officers. So that sounds great. But the question I had, had to do with just the last few classes. As I recall, in each class, we get a nice, big group of people who are interested and even get through the vetting process of the city. But what's the number that graduate on the average? As, just correct me if I'm wrong, I've always seen it to be somewhere between thirty and forty max, right?
Yes, depending on the class size. I can't give you, in recent years.
I know the class sizes have varied, but.
Yeah, we usually, there'll be some that they get into the academy and a few weeks in kind of get second thoughts about whether this is a career they want.
Sure.
We also get the few, and very few, I think. There's a lesser number with the mentality in the academy now is it's not so much to, you know, break them down and build them up, you know, military style. It's actually to develop them, mentor them, and encourage them and guide them through the successful, not just the academy, but continuation throughout their careers. So I think you see less of the ones that, but I know we just recently had one that definitely was having some issues. It doesn't mean that they won't be a good officer, but I think there may be some times that they just, they're not ready right now at this time in their life. And so we'll lose a couple that way. But I think if I was just to give a ballpark figure is that we're losing less people from our academies. In my day, a class of fifty may have graduated thirty-five. I think now a class of, we, I think we've only lost one or two from this current class. I think the numbers are going to be significantly less. Plus, we're also finding ways that we can put them in, you know, pre-hire positions so that they're ready, getting ready for the academy before. Because we do have people that come to a testing process and they're not physically fit, and that's one of the areas that we can change that in maybe a period of ten to twelve weeks before. So we're doing everything we can to keep what we get. It's not a matter that we're getting so many that we can sacrifice, you know, ten percent, twenty percent. So I can't give you an exact figure, Counsel Penlon, I'm sorry, but it's looking better. I can say that.
It's good to hear. Yeah, so just speaking about that ten percent, have we looked at all at adjustment of some of our standards with regard to minor prior infractions by applicants?
Well, yes and no, Counsel Penlon. I think that in some areas, and I know that Counselor Gibson referred to college, that we're definitely, one of the reasons we're looking at the satellite program is that they will get their college education as part of the academy and as part of the pre-academy with the satellite sixteen weeks. So they'll come in ready with two years of college. I think that we also, as part of our career development program, we're encouraging continuing education. So I think that, you know, we're in that right direction to try to ensure that that's going to happen. I'm not sure I answered your question, though, completely.
Oh, well, just talking about, you know, I know that it's somewhat been in the news in the past about, say, for something like a minor possession of marijuana, just as an example, all right? That type of infraction, that disqualifies somebody from applying, right?
Yeah, and, yes, Counsel Penlon, Madam Chair and Counsel Penlon, we, we're looking at some of the standards right now. Obviously, we have some standards that probably won't be flexible. But when we did the studies, we saw where we're losing most of the people. And some of them are in the initial entry testing, whether it's the written test, a good DR in the areas of the physical fitness. Again, these are areas that we can have them retest and get back in the system fairly quickly. Where we have the biggest problems is when we do the background. And like you said, it's part of that is a pre-questionnaire that deals with integrity that's followed up with, you know, psychological and polygraph and medical. Some of those standards, like medical standards and things like that, we can't change. But what we're looking at right now is we're having a review at the top with the chief's selection process that actually looks at some of those candidates that are being subjectively disqualified for, say, on a polygraph where there's, it's not a matter of whether they've passed or failed, but it's a matter of if it was in question or they couldn't come up with a decision. There's also areas, same thing with the psychologists, we're reviewing to make sure that we're not dismissing people based on, say, one person's opinion. We're trying to take another look at that. So we're trying to do that. But the standards that you refer to, as far as timeframes for like DWI arrests, felony arrests, drug arrests, I know you mentioned marijuana. We still have those standards in place. But again, this is a different society than it was ten years ago or when I started on the job. I mean, we don't have height and weight requirements, things like that anymore. So could they change? Yes. We will have to look at that in terms of, we don't want to lower standards either and then get somebody that's going to be problematic down the road.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, just real quickly, so, again, it's highly competitive, the whole deal with laterals really. I guess I see it as very similar to us trying to attract economic development or us trying to attract tourism or our doing good planning that makes a place look good and feel good as a place to live because police officers are residents, too. And we've got so much to offer, and somehow, coalescing all of that, not only for economic development and so forth, but for recruitment of good public safety officials and servants would be a great way to go.
Yes, and Madam Counsel, or Madam Chair and Counsel Penlon, one of the things is we're going to start targeting people during the summer because that's when, after graduation, you know, people all over are looking for jobs, especially college graduates. But we're going to use some tactics, using our own economic situation here, is you go to some, like last winter in the East Coast, I imagine a lot of people that are looking to be police jobs don't want to work in twelve feet of snow or cold below freezing. We can use the, you know, the climate and some of the benefits and low cost of living compared to different parts of the country. When we go out to these sites, use that as selling points, too. So we are part of the, as I mentioned earlier, we're part of the bigger city picture, too, and we know police impact that, and so we can attract people that way as well.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego, I want to ask, Counselor Pena has a pertinent question here first. Counselor Pena?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just had a question, it may be for Sarita, but, you know, I was working with the prior administration just based on what Counselor Benton was saying about the small possessions of marijuana. So my concern was a lot of young minorities were actually being excluded and across the board, but they were being excluded because of the possessions of marijuana. But I was told at the time that they were referring to the state statute. And through the work that had been done, the state statute, they were saying here, locally, we were saying that the state statute read for possession, but it actually reads for convictions. So talking to the prior administration, they were actually meeting with the folks from the state to get clarification from that in order to change it because what was determined was that we were reading the state statute wrong.
Madam Chair, Counselor Pena, there's a good point there. I think the state DPS that kind of mandates some of this, but each community here has their own standards. I think with marijuana possession, I know we've just made it a civil penalty for small amounts. I don't think that's as much as the issue as the recency of consumption or the amount of consumption over the years. I mean, I think that we pretty much find there isn't too many candidates here that haven't experimented with marijuana. If we eliminated, we would probably have no candidates in the future. But I think you're on track with, as far as changing that particular standard. Obviously, the hardcore drugs and addictive drugs, we probably have no wiggle room there. But I think there are some areas, I mean, again, same standards with alcohol use and things like that. It's not a matter of that they drink or they have possession about. We get a few that have minor in possession charges. They grow up, get out of college, and they, they're very responsible. But if they're still drinking and drinking heavily, that's going to impact on the quality of the police officer candidate. So some of these standards are subjective, but I think you're on track as if it's based on state law or some type of state mandate through the DPS in terms of what would be highly recommended, even national standards, we'd be more than willing to look into that. At this point, I can't answer what previous administration did or even where we're going to go with this because we're still in a flux.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I could just follow up with that. So I'd like to sit down and meet, maybe we can sit down and go over some of the information that I have currently because I was told, because there's lots of kids, I've received calls, constituents, that, you know, that especially from the area, we had a lot, we had a job fair for police recruitment in, at a Trisco Heritage, and a lot of those students or young men and women were actually being excluded because of that. And I received all those calls, so I started this whole discussion. And what I was told is that we had to follow state statute and that, at the end of the day, through all those discussions, is that we were reading it wrong. So I'd like to sit down and just, and meet, because I think that's something that we really need to look at. I think it's a, it's.
Ms. Nayer. Madam Chair, Counselor Pena, we agree, and there, it's not just the marijuana, but also there's the credit check, there is the literacy and numeracy requirements. We see that we're losing candidates at each one of those stages. And in some cases, the answer might be that we might lose them for that class, but we shouldn't lose contact with them over the long run. If we can connect them with resources that'll help them rehabilitate their credit for the look-back period, if we can help them connect with an adult education program, if we can stay in touch with them so when that three- or five-year look back on the marijuana possession goes away, we still know who they are, and if they still want to be a police, we can have them join the force. And also looking at using the PSA programs as a way to stay connected to those folks who have expressed interest. And so we are working with APD on all of those issues and kind of reevaluating in that light, and I'd be happy to facilitate a meeting with the chief and others on that.
And Madam Chair, if I could add just a bit to that, we're definitely striving for diversity, Counsel Pena. And as part of that early intervention is we can reach out to those young kids and kind of explain to them how, when you go to college, it's student loans and credit cards sometimes will cause problems later in life. Sometimes that party, partying, certain things that they do can actually bar them later. I know we put the restrictions in terms of, do not apply if you have done this. But I think that this is definitely an area where we can attract more candidates. And again, it's not so much those issues as it is we look for, you know, different types of characteristics, integrity, service orientation, some of their own, you know, accomplishments in their life, and then their overall maturity. Those are more important in terms of success as a police officer than, say, a mistake that they made when they were seventeen or eighteen. And so I agree with you, and I would welcome also being part of that meeting. Our academy director, Commander, that is the director of the academy is here as well, and I'm sure he would want to be part of that.
Counsel Pena, and then Counsel Borrego.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for that. But just one last comment is that I, you know, I agree, Sarita, you know, providing them the resources to help with, you know, if they have bad credit that we don't want to lose them, we want to maintain contact. But, you know, one of the challenges that we do have is when we look at those things in a strict way, you actually, you know, not getting through the class because you have bad credit, it's a challenge and it's a hurdle for people who experience poverty. You know, that tends to be an issue. So it's to no fault of their own, and I just think that, you know, maybe through the initial process, we could work to try to help these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Chief Guyer, for the work that you and APD do and the fire department also. I know it's very difficult, and we're sort of all in this sort of mess together. And, you know, I kind of see it as a community, as coming together and not just the private, the public sector. And I think we're all trying to do our part in the public sector, but we also need the private sector to work with this. Two questions. One is with regard to the budget, and sort of back to the budget, is, you know, what assurance do we have, I guess, and maybe this also goes to Sarita and the administration, is how do we have benchmarks in place to know that we are actually moving forward to achieve what it is that we're saying, that we're trying to achieve? I mean, are we looking at things sort of, you know, in the next two months, in the next four months? Do we have benchmarks in place that will alert you if something, a strategy is not working, then we maybe tweak our strategy or? So, I mean, I guess that's the question that I'm asking, is what are the benchmarks that you all have in place?
Well, there's four priority areas that I think I can kind of categorize as, that would fall into that. Now, we actually are doing a type of a work plan with the city right now, where we have to outline that as directors. But from the police department in general, obviously, you're looking at the issues of crime, we're looking at the issues of retention and recruitment, as we've talked, Counselor, and also community policing initiatives, as well as the CASA and those agreements.
So we have qualifying factors that we're. So, we have qualifying factors that we would look at in the next maybe two months, three months, four months, five, I mean...
Yes, ma'am. I think there's performance measures. I mean, with crime, obviously, we're going to do quarterly revealing of where we're at in terms of the property crime and violence crimes, so those should be pretty self-evident. Community policing, the process will be underway. Some of that will be subjective, because we're developing different pillars in different areas, but I think some performance benchmarks may be, how many people we engage in that, and then what services are provided, or what kind of partnerships are developed. I think recruitment and retention will kind of speak for itself. There should be some raw data there, you know, in, at different intervals.
And I think all of us up here will be looking for those benchmarks, and sort of regular, maybe, reporting that we are trying to achieve and meeting those goals.
May I, Madam Chair? Madam Chair, Counselor Borrego, I think what you'll see that we've already put in place, and will continue to expand, is increased transparency in what's going on in the police department, not just for the councilors, but for the entire city. And so, from the data portal, from the public release of crime stats, to updates on recruitment, we want the whole city to know, because this is the number-one concern that we hear from all of our citizens, and everyone who's paying that extra tax deserves to know that their money is being put to the purposes we said it would. So, absolutely, that is the plan.
I very much appreciate that. My second question, or maybe really isn't even a question, but maybe it's sort of encouragement, because I don't see it in here, but I'm sure you guys are probably looking at it, is involving the private sector in helping to, you know, maintain our police force. And, in the past, and I know this for a fact, is there were, you know, and this goes back to Counselor Pena's concern about credit worthiness, some officers maybe, you know, they were given assistance in finding homes. And, you know, I guess I'm sort of reaching out to the public tonight a little bit, especially to the private sector, is what are strategies that we could use as a city to help encourage both officers and firefighters to choose that profession? And, in the past, I remember that, you know, they were offered incentives with, you know, their mortgages, and things that would help. So, I hope that we're looking at that angle as well, and strategies that would assist in, you know, bringing our community together, and really, all of us working in, to have more officers on the street.
Madam Chair, Counselor Borrego, with community policing, that's exactly what we're doing. We're reaching out to the private sectors, even clergy and whatever, because those people can reach out within their communities, and with their areas of expertise, and encourage young people, help support some of our programs in that regard. And I think that that's part of that outreach that we're looking for, is, I mean, I think our best salespeople are our own officers, when they go out there in the community, engage in non-enforcement activity, represent the community more so as an oppressing force, but it actually has been in partnership.
And, you know, when I say that, I'm really looking to the banking industry, and, you know, how they can help. I mean, not just the banking industry, but, you know, retail, and other things that can offer incentives to help maintain these officers to stay in our community. So, thank you all for everything that you're doing, and, you know, hopefully, we're gonna get over this hurdle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Counselor Harris.
Thank you. Chief, could you explain what is the credit worthiness, or how does that, what does an officer have to do, or what's the issue that you're concerned about with regard to credit?
I may have to defer that to the director of the academy that deals with recruiting, if I can refer that, Counselor, to...
Sure.
Speaker Commander Sullivan, he's the director.
Good evening, Camp Commander, it's your lucky day.
Good evening. Lucky, right? Good evening. Counselor, Counselor Harris, you have a question, correct, sir?
Yes. What are the criteria for credit worthiness that would, or could be used to exclude a cadet?
Right. Good question. We don't have like an exact number, like, you know, 600 or whatever on your credit rating. What we do is we look at an overall credit score, and overall payment history, just to show financial responsibility. So, it is a little bit subjective, I'll be honest with you. And, in my time as the academy director, and I used to do chief selection prior to that, I've never actually experienced releasing a candidate based on the credit worthiness alone. You know, if we saw that combined with several other things, that would be red flags. But, usually, we're just looking for a pattern of responsible financial independence. We're hoping that the candidate doesn't have several outstanding write-offs to bad debt, and things like that, because the ultimate fear would be, of course, as a police officer, you're entrusted by the community, and you're supposed to be, you know, above that and a pillar of the community. I don't want to send out an officer who could potentially be tempted to do something unethical or even illegal, so...
Because one of the ways that I've seen, and in my profession also, is that with regard to security clearances, a lot of times, they'll actually encourage people to file bankruptcy, because then they have zero debt, and then they're not subject to temptation, which I think is what you're talking about, right?
Right. We wouldn't get that in-depth with it, to be honest with you, and I know, because I have a security clearance, so I kind of understand what you're talking about. But, a bankruptcy would necessarily be a pro or a con thing. Debt, having debt is okay, and we understand that. And I sit through hundreds of cadets over the last few years, and it's good to see that you have a house, or a car, and you're making your payments on it. That's fine. We've even accepted candidates who had some write-offs due to poor debt. It's, if we see a massive history of an individual who's not, clearly not paying their bills, and is living outside their means, you know, you see somebody who works at a, you know, a restaurant, for example, but they're driving a $100,000 automobile, we're probably going to ask them, "How are you paying for that automobile?" You know, and they may say, "My parents helped me." Okay, that's great. That's fine. It's usually more something that we're going to ask for explanation on, and just kind of, if, fine-tune it a little bit. I can tell you with absolute certainty, I, at least in my experience, and going forward, if I'm still the academy director, I'm not going to, you know, eliminate a candidate just based purely on financial issues, unless it's just so egregious that...
So, that's not really a big bar to getting into the academy, is...
No, it's just, it's one of them, but it's certainly, and it's usually, like I said, it's going to be that, and we're also going to see significant drug use, or we're going to see, you know, they've had 15 jobs in the last two months. So, we're kind of, you know, wondering, is this person really here for the long term? The goal is to hire somebody as an employee of the city of Albuquerque, in the Albuquerque Police Department, for 25 years. The biggest issue we've had, and the chief kind of alluded to it, is we're hiring folks, they're going through what is one of the highest-rated academies in the nation, and they're leaving. Because they're taking our training, and then they're going somewhere else. So, that's one of my qualifiers, is I want to make sure that you're not just going to take my training program and go to another city. It's competitive. We want to keep them here.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Romero, I think that's it, Chief, unless you have a statement you'd like to make?
No, I'm very honored to be here and representing the department, and we appreciate your continuing support. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Romero. That's one down.
One down. I think the big guns are down. Madam Chair, next up is fire, with Paul Dow as chief. The proposed general fund budget for the fire department is $82.9 million. They have 730 full-time equivalent positions. The proposed budget for fiscal year 19, the mayor's proposed budget includes $3.1 million to implement the mobile integrated healthcare and community outreach program. This program will include 19 new full-time positions. There's also an increase of $555,000 for internal service costs, technical adjustments associated with risk, fleet, and communications. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Good evening, Chief Dow. Are there any questions of the chief?
Madam Chair, councilors, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. You're excused. Mr. Romero.
Madam Chair, next up is family and community services. We do have a memo to, in response to, I believe it was council question number six regarding social service contracts. We're submitting to you, and I think we have a handout clarifying our response a little bit. The question from council was provide a list of fiscal year 18 social service contracts that are not being renewed in fiscal year 19, and a justification for the termination. Also, will other organizations or city departments be performing these services instead? And I don't believe we did an adequate job of answering it the first time, so this is just to add to your binders, councilors, and feel free to look at it and follow up with questions of Director Pierce. Family and Community Services has a general fund proposed budget of $39.9 million. There are 201 positions funded out of the general fund. The proposed budget includes $18 million for various social service contracts, and professional and technical contracts. There's half a million to expand and/or provide new youth programs, also aimed, sort of fitting in with the public safety initiative from all angles, councilors. There's $150,000 for the creation of two full-time supervisor positions, and temporary wages to support the reopening of Dennis Chavis and Pat Hurley community centers. We've created mid-year, in the current fiscal year, three deputy directors that will be focusing on homelessness, and affordable housing strategies, on educational initiatives, and on health, and/or behavioral health programs. Madam Chair, would you like, are there any questions for the director, before I embarrass the next director and have him come up with no questions?
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Councilors, do you have any questions of Director Pierce? Yes, Counselor Benton. Good evening, Director.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Director. Probably going to have some other questions that we'll send to you written, but the one that I had was heading home. My understanding, over the years, is that we've always been playing catch-up with the demand for heading home versus our capacity. And that was part of the reason last year that the council did appropriate an extra $400,000 to heading home. Do you know where they're at in terms of their, what the latent need is out there for heading home? Or could someone speak to that?
Let me call on staff if we know. Lisa, do you want to come on up? And with this, I'd like to introduce one of our new deputy directors, Lisa Huvall, with housing and homelessness.
I think I recognize her.
Good evening, Deputy Director. Budget hearing.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and Counselor Benton. You know, I can't, I cannot speak to the Albuquerque Heading Home Initiative specifically, but in terms of some community-wide data about homelessness and where we're at, some of you know we have a coordinated entry system that we're now using to fill all city and HUD-funded homeless programs. And we have about 5,000 people in our coordinated entry system. So, these are folks that are currently homeless, or have really severe housing instability that are looking for supportive housing. And I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I would guess that, you know, we probably have about 100 openings in our supportive housing programs for homeless folks each month. So, you can see the need versus the supply. So, you know, I think heading home is a piece of that, and then there's lots of other permanent supportive housing programs as well. So, there is really, you know...
Yeah, I'm kind of picking that out, just because it's right there in front. And, yeah, as I recall, when that program was started out under the previous administration, they started out with about a half a million a year. And we, you know, we did get up above north of a million, and that need seemed to be absorbed quickly in and of itself. So, just wanted to touch base on that, and welcome. I think it's great to have you on board with the city.
Glad to be here. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Director.
You're welcome.
Mr. Romero.
Madam Chair, next up is cultural services. We also have another handout here before we start this slide, councilors. As we mentioned earlier, this is in a memo format. There's been some questions about the special events money that was appropriated, and is generally appropriated year after year. In the fiscal year 19 budget, 18 budget, we had about $633,000 allocated in non-recurring funding within cultural services for special events. So, this would be the, this would be, you know, Cesar Chavez Celebration, Flamingo Ensemble, we, contractors like that, that we generally call out, because it is one-time money. In fiscal year 19's projected revenue stream, we didn't have a lot of non-recurring revenue. So, we, what we decided to do was allocate sort of a general pot of money of $400,000 within cultural services, and to allow the councilors to decide which of these contractors they would include in the final budget that you adopt on the 21st. Since that time, it's clear that the $400,000 was not enough, and I've been instructed, and I think we have a plan now, to find another $233,000, so that we can at least have enough funding to match what we had in the fiscal year 18 budget. So, I'll be working with council staff here in the next few days, and we'll work out an amendment to add back the funding to the equivalent amount of fiscal year 18. So, that long-winded answer is what's summarized in that memo.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Councilors, do you have any questions of Director Sanchez? There are no questions of Directors... Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is in regards to the proposed deletion of non-recurring revenues for the Alameda Library. And, you're looking at bringing in a new position, a full-time media public outreach coordinator for special events? What is the cost of that public media relations outreach for special events? And what is it going to cost us to close, and what are we going to gain by closing the Elmosa Library?
Thank you. Counselor Sanchez, would you like to have Director Sanchez answer that question?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, I think I can, in general, terms answer it.
Okay.
As you know, Counselor, Alameda, Elmosa, I'm sorry, Library has been funded for the past three years with non-recurring money. In fact, in the 18 budget, it was even a smaller amount, as we went from, I think, four positions down to three. Once again, it was non-recurring money funding that. We did not have a lot of non-recurring revenue, and so, it was, it is one of the proposed deletions in the department. We're working with Family and Community Services to possibly look at a different use of that space. I mean, assuming the council adopts the budget the way it was proposed. And so, it would be something that would allow for programming after school, tutoring, or something in that line, to continue services to kids in that space that we know how it's used, so... And with regard to the position, $52,000 is what the position's funded at, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Romero.
I won't hit the highlights in this one, but they've been up on the screen for a bit. It's a $39 million general fund budget with 350 positions. Civilian police oversight is funded at $1,087,000. There are eight positions. The increase is mainly technical for tort and other claims that were assigned to this department. As you know, by ordinance, we have to fund this department at least at one-half percent of the appropriation for the police department, and we are in excess of that. And I'm not sure Director Harness is here tonight. Oh, are there any questions for the director?
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Any questions? Not at this time. Thank you, Mr. Harness.
Excuse me. Economic development. Cynthia Hadameo is the director. The proposed... The proposed general fund budget is four point three million with eleven positions. The budget includes continued funding for economic development investments of one hundred and fifty thousand, transit-oriented development corridors for one hundred and twenty-five thousand, small business development at fifty-five thousand, and Lissa ABQ at thirty thousand. Madam Chair, are there any questions for Director Harameo?
Thank you. Councilors, any questions? I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Wait, yes, Counselor Benton.
Mr. Romero, in the past, we funded the Burellis Main Street, South Forest Street, Main Street, which was, which remains in formation, and we had funded that at forty thousand dollars the past couple of years. I think they're still doing good work. I think they're still working towards their, their bigger certification, if you will. What's the story with that one?
We, it's not in the budget currently.
Madam Chair, Counselor Benton, as in past years, because it's in a different category than Nob Hill and Main Street, it's been funded through the, the other dollars that are available for contractual services and economic development. And so for consistency, until they complete that certification, we think this is the right approach of, of keeping these Main Streets in this sort of line-itemed, specifically-named contracts in the non-recurring budget, but then we, we fully intend to continue that relationship with Burellis Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neer.
And to add to that, Madam Chair and Counselor Benton, it is on the list, on the memo that I just handed you. Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Borrego.
I just have a general observation and kind of comment, and it, it's both for economic development and cultural services. I noticed that there are a lot of programs in the downtown area and the inner-city neighborhoods, and, and I very much appreciate that because I think that to have a healthy city, we need to have a, a healthy downtown. But I would like to see, at some point, how some of these programs that are being funded can sort of, you know, be filtered out into some of the outer areas of the city. And maybe, you know, and I appreciate that we have Summer Fest on the West Side, but, you know, there are, there are a lot of people that come downtown, but then there are a lot of people that don't. And I would like to see how, you know, and I, and I, for example, the other day I met with, I think it was Five Sixteen Art, is it Five Sixteen Arts? And I asked them, you know, how could your program be expanded to my district? Possibly, you know, to find sort of a, a core area in my district or in districts like mine that are sort of out of the center city. So I would really like for us to kind of think a little bit out of the box and maybe think about how some of these programs can be expanded to sort of have an influence on other parts of Albuquerque. So I, I, it's just a general comment, and I hope that you guys would take that in stride. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Mr. Romero.
Next up, Office of City Clerk. Trina Casados is the acting city clerk. The proposed budget this year, fiscal year nineteen, is one point five million. They have seventeen general fund FTEs. There was one-time funding in fiscal year eighteen that goes away for nine hundred and seventeen thousand. That was for the election that was held just last fall. Internal service costs, technical adjustments, essentially, there were adjustments of two hundred and fourteen thousand for risk fleet and communication adjustments. Are there any questions for city clerk? Ms. Casados is ill tonight, but our CAO can answer questions.
CAO can answer questions. Okay, Counselor Harris.
Yes, thank you. At the, I guess the last meeting, intergovernmental relations meeting, we were, learned that there might be some potential litigation, that we have to figure out what the city clerk is going to be doing if we're actually gonna be running our own elections or not, and that, of course, affects our budget. So, do you know what's going on with that? Because I, we passed, the state passed a statute, and I think there might be lots of legal problems with it. I mean, one of the obvious legal problems with the statute is that, as the statute is written, it would force the city into a combined election. We wouldn't run it, and our city charter that has all these provisions for citizen participation would essentially be eliminated because the county would decide if they want to put these questions on the ballot or not. That's just one example. Changes the terms of office, doesn't give us any time to actually adjust, requires that our charter be changed, and what if we don't do it? Or what if the voters don't vote for the changes? Then what happens? I mean, and they gave the conservancy districts four years to figure this out, and they gave us no time at all. So I, I think there's a lot of potential legal problems with this new state statute, and I'm just wondering if, if there's going to, is there some uncertainty on a legal, on a city legal side as to, as to whether or not we might need to challenge this?
Ms. Neer, that one's a, that's a good one.
It is. Madam Chair, Counselor Harris, we share your concerns with the very dramatic and sweeping legislation that the legislature saw fit to enact, taking control of our local elections away from our city and our city clerk. We are considering whether a legal challenge is appropriate to assert our home rule, not just on this, but on other issues that the legislature sort of saw fit to take charge of. That said, we also have to proceed on a parallel path to prepare in case we do need to make those changes to our charter that would impact some, some sort of like mechanical things, like the terms would start in January first instead of December first, as well as some more, you know, substantive issues where, that relate to public finance deadlines as well as the campaign deadlines themselves. So we are going down both of those paths now in, in efforts led by our city attorney. How that impacts budget specifically is that we haven't really tinkered with the budget on the premise that we will be required to follow the state statute, and since we're in an off-year, we, we have less of a budget impact than we would if we were in a, an election year. We probably will need any cushion money that we would have had left over for elections to undertake the legal actions we're gonna need to take to comply. So either we're gonna win in some forum and we're gonna need that money for elections, or we're gonna lose and we're gonna need that money to do the reforms that you mentioned that would be necessary to comply with the legislation. In addition, the city clerk plays that really important role in our Inspection of Public Records Act coordination, and as you're all aware, for the past few years, we've gotten hit in court a whole bunch of times on our, on our ability to comply with IPR. And so we also see a lot of room to improve those processes and would definitely look to use any money left over from a change in elections to improve our IPR process. I think we'd see long-term gains or at least balance from our risk program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neer. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Romero, you're almost there.
Madam Chair, Parks and Recreation is the next department. David Simon is the director. The proposed general fund budget is thirty-four point nine million with two hundred and fifty-nine general fund positions. There is CIP Construction. Crew is moved from Municipal Development. That's twenty-four positions that increase this department's budget by one point five million. There's an increase in the subsidy to the Golf Operating Fund of three hundred and forty-nine thousand in fiscal year nineteen, and we also made an adjustment in fiscal year eighteen, given the current projection, projection of green fee revenue. So it's needed to shore up the fund this year as well. In fiscal year nineteen, the budget also includes two hundred thousand to expand and/or provide new youth programs, also aimed at attacking public safety or addressing public safety issues in the community, and one hundred and eight thousand for two positions to the expanded Los Altos Aquatics Facility for capital coming online in fiscal year nineteen. Are there any questions for Director Simon?
All right, Counselor Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Romero, and something I guess maybe could get back to me on. One thing that I've thought of recently, and I talked to Counselor Sanchez at a recent budget briefing with Ms. Yar about, is that what we have in our parks seems to be more and more is vandalism and vagrant problems, camping, and, and other activities that go on that, that are just real unfortunate. And one of the things that could be possible is having city security guards. Maybe not that many, but there may have to be many if you're doing this citywide, but maybe they could be one, or maybe they could do teams of two, and at night, maybe they could just go by and visit the parks and, and keep them safe. And if people are doing things in those parks that they're not supposed to do, then they could get them to stop. One of the things that affects particularly Counselor Gibson but me as well is the, I think, they did a report of, of police reports in parks, and there are like fifty-two incidents in parks, and, and over half of those are at Los Altos Park, like twenty-some, police reports in one park, which used to be partially my district when they're redistricting it all, when Counselor Gibson's district, but I kind of claim it in a way because it's right on the border of my district. And then we have Singing Arrow Park, which is a problem. I understand in Counselor Davis's district, you have Wilson Park, which is, it can be, it can be rough for, you want kids to be able to go to school and, and feel comfortable in that place, and a lot of times they don't, or they can't. So I'm wondering if you thought about any of these kind of security measures that might be useful, and maybe we could do a, something to put in the budget to study that for next year, maybe we can add some funds in this budget. And, and I see we have our director.
Madam Chair and Counselor Harris, I'll let Director Simon answer.
Simon, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and council members. Again, I appreciate the honor of serving the citizens in this position and your interest and support for parks and green spaces. We, first of all, I have to say I'm very, very proud of the efforts of the parks staff who do an excellent job with the resources they have to keep our parks clean and safe. They are working really hard to do that. So as we know, you know, there are manifestations of social issues that show up in parks. We're just a reflection of the society at large. So this is a very, very important issue for me personally to try to tackle. So we're discussing the, the administration, with APD, with our partner departments such as Family and Community, and of course with the council, a number of both physical and programmatic approaches we could take to try to make the parks clean and safe.
Yes, Counselor Harris.
Yes, and particularly, I'm just wondering if you're considering city security guards, because a security guard doesn't cost nearly as much money as a sworn officer, and it's perfectly appropriate to use a security guard for city property. So I'm just wondering if that's in your mix of things you're considering.
Madam Chair, Counselor Harris, the, the short answer is yes, and, and we also think this might be a good use for some of our police service aides, who, when there's not big events, sometimes we don't always have places to call them out. I would just also like to add that we, we've started a public safety coordination meeting of, of the key public safety departments, three, three weeks a month, and Director Simon actually just asked to become a permanent member of that meeting. People don't usually ask to be in more meetings, but he did because he really grasps what a huge part of that jo, of his job is, public safety, and so I'd just like to, to acknowledge that he is really focused on that.
Thank you, and, yeah, I know, I was trying to get rid of you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had discussed, oh, a while ago, with the former Parks Director, about possibly putting cameras in there at the park. They're pricey. I think they're about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars, camera, trailer, trailer-mounted cameras. So have you considered that, or has there been any recent discussion about, about using trailer-mounted cameras?
Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, you know, the, the film industry is doing great in New Mexico, so anything involving more cameras is probably a good idea. Yes, we have already installed new camera security systems at three facilities recently using a state grant. We started with some of our aquatic pool facilities, so we've installed cameras at Wilson Pool at Montgomery and at the Sunport Pool. And it's too early to tell just how effective they'll be in deterring crime. I just happen to think they're one tool in what has to be a comprehensive approach.
Sure.
And they generally have run about thirty thousand dollars per site when you install cameras like this.
Yeah. So these would be installed like on the, on the, the light?
Yeah, we, you, you, we really assess each site, Counselor, to see where the best kind of coverage and prevention effect would be from cameras, and you deploy the cameras appropriately. Yeah. But we, we've already seen some, I guess I'd say it's too early to tell, we'll have to have a whole summer to really observe the efficacy of these, but I think we've seen some preliminary improvement at Wilson Pool. And I will also say we, APD's very generous, they've loaned us a, a trailer, mobile trailer. It's connected to the real-time center, as all the cameras are, and that provides what I'd call a temporary moderate benefit when we put that trailer out in a park, but it is temporary.
Sure. So, and, you know, that pool will be finished, I'm not sure when, this fall, I think. The Los Altos Ball, Pool.
Yes, Counselor. We're, we're hoping the project will be completed in October.
Right. So that, and the fact that, you know, there are other things that attract kids. We already had one very, very bad incident there a few years ago. I, you know, I think maybe we should revisit the idea of, of putting cameras in. The, and, and, you know, I think that, that trailer-mounted cameras actually do two things. Not only do they record what's happening, but they also, you know, they, they serve as like a warning to people. They're big, they're hard to miss, you know? The ones that we put up on light fixtures, unless we have signs out, people don't see them, you know? So it's just a way of letting people know that they're being watched. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Director Simon, the mobile cameras have worked in the past. We do have them at Pat Hurley Park and other parks throughout the West Side, and I would hope that we can incorporate and purchase more of those cameras, because that has been a very effective tool in deterring some of the crime that we are dealing with in some of the parks. But I do like the idea of maybe hiring more security to go out to the different parks. We still have Lavalin Park closed down. We're gonna be meeting on that sometime next week, and the residents don't want that park reopened, and that's unfortunate because that's a benefit to the residents of that community, but if they are fearful of sending their kids to that park because of human feces on the playground equipment, on the sidewalks, and needles buried in the sand and throughout the park, that's not a benefit to the community. But I think we need to work in collaboration with the administration in trying to find ways to make our parks safe, where people want to be at the parks and take their families to these parks. One other question I have is, I'm also looking at, you're saying there's gonna be FY nineteen proposed budget, which includes two hundred thousand dollars to expand or provide new youth programs? And then I look at, one of the other departments is also looking at another five hundred thousand dollar appropriation for youth programs. Do we have a breakdown of what those programs are going to be?
Ms. Neer, it looks like it's yours.
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, I can give an overview, and then Director Simon can go into a little more detail in his department specifically. But what we did was we had each department say, we asked each of those three departments that got appropriations for expanded after-school, that would be Family, Community Services, Cultural Services, and Parks, to come up with the cheapest way to double participation, youth participation in their programs, because that's our overall goal. And so they each came up with different ideas, and of course, they have to be fleshed out in more detail over the coming months if we receive that money. But that, that was the basis for it, and I can turn it over to Director Simon to talk about some of his ideas that included the Boski, some of the Boski-related programs and youth athletics.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Counselor Sanchez. This is a initiative I'm extremely excited about, not just for the positive impacts, you know, on children and the fun and joy that they get from doing these things, but because of the community impact and social impact and public safety impact that we know these programs will produce. So I'm very, very excited to try to have a chance to work on these. At, at Parks, you know, the first thing I'd say is our, our programs, after-school, summer programs, they touch every district in the city. So we're, we spread out these services robustly around the city, and as we look to expand them, what I want to do is, is continue that. I want to make sure we're serving all, as many kids as we can across the city. I want to make sure we're serving all, as many kids as we can across the city. Also, I want to, I think the smart, prudent approach is to build on existing effective programs where we can scale them up, and maybe we'll pilot a few new ones for effectiveness. But for us, we can easily scale up programs such as aquatics programs, swim lessons. Personally believe every child in our city should learn how to swim. We have an outstanding bicycle safety and awareness program. This is an easy way to scale up very, very good programs for kids. We can scale up some sports programs using the existing facilities we have, tennis, pickleball, the athletic fields. And then I'm very, very excited about continuing our work to introduce more children to nature. So we had some, heard some earlier speakers on that. And we have a great program to bring kids into the Bosque, and we want to pilot a little bit more of that. And those can be prioritized in areas where, are areas of the city that are a little bit more underserved and don't get those opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peregua.
Good evening, Mr. Simon. I think I saw you at Isotopes on Saturday. Was that you?
I can confirm that rumor, yes.
I thought it was you. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the concerns in my district particularly. There was a shooting at one of our parks over off of Rainbow by Volcano Vista School. And, you know, we have parks way out, Ventana West, and, you know, the lighting is really very poor in some of those areas. And, you know, I, I want to reiterate what they said about the cameras, because I, I happen to know that there's some, there's at least one camera in one of our arroyos. And maybe looking at other agencies and how we can coordinate, because I know some of our parks are adjacent to trails, and they're also adjacent to arroyos. So maybe there's some coordination that can be done with that. And that would help save us some money as well. And the other thing that I would just like to bring up to you is some of the ADA accessibility in some of the parks. And, you know, I know that it's costly, but it's also something that we need to service all of our residents. So I guess with that segue, I'll just ask that maybe you and I meet, because I have some concerns about some of the areas.
Thank you, Counselor, and I look forward to those conversations and for your suggestions.
Thank you, Counselors. Any more questions? Counselor Davis.
Mine's quick. I just wanted to follow with Counselor Sanchez, you started down where I was going. Mr. Simon, I, I got to tell you, excuse me, and Ms. Nyer, thank you for y'alls commitment to harm reduction in our parks. I know we're working through some new things now to look at how we can better service people who use our parks for sanctuary, safe places to hang out. And I appreciate that very much, and I also appreciate your department's attention to Wilson. It's been a problem area for a while, and we're already seeing some benefits from the early work there. So thank you. It's paid off with folks at the school who noticed. I do want to ask about the extra $200,000 for, in your department, for those after-school and at-risk children programs. I know you're ramping up stuff, which is great. But for the new ideas, or folks who have new proposals, or programs that are working in the community that are not yet partnered or connected to the city, can you commit to, or can you tell us about the process that would facilitate a public participation in helping to determine what programs might be good new partners to pilot with the city? Will you have a public process? Will you have a committee? Do you know yet how groups who are doing good work could partner with the city and use those new resources?
Madam Chair, Counselor Davis, first of all, I think we'll be open to good ideas that are good fits for parks. I think it's always wise to keep in mind your core competencies, whether you're in business or in government. And I think it makes sense for parks to work and continue to work in the areas where we're strong and where we can make, we can be good partners with other organizations. So I think some part of the answer to your question depends on funding, as to what kind of process we take to allocate whatever dollars are provided.
And I just haven't been able to get as far into this as I need to be to ask this question, and we can do it later. Do you know, Mr. Simon, out of that 200,000, what do you expect to be sort of ramp-up programs, and what percentage do you intend to be new?
If I may, Madam Chair, Counselor Davis, we, we gave the directors in those three departments a mandate to come up not only with the, the cheapest, but the quickest way to scale up. And so, you know, just to be fair to them, we did not give them a whole lot of time to come up with an elaborate plan. But, you know, especially Director Simon will, I think in terms of a more public process, I think it's an excellent idea. We want to get more kids in the programs this summer. So we're going to prioritize those efforts, and we can also use this summer to sort of expand our, our view and our net and involve the public in things that might be more appropriate for after-school, for school programs during the school year. But assuming we get the funding this summer, we're just going to ask Director Simon to hit the accelerator on the things that we can, we know we can do and do well.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nyer. Are there any questions? All right, Mr. Romero.
Okay, members of the committee, the last department is Senior Affairs. Director Anna Sanchez is here. The proposed general fund budget for Senior Affairs is 10.3 million, funding 64 full-time equivalent positions. We have the creation of three full-time term positions to prepare for hosting the 2019 National Senior Games. There's also a one-time appropriation of 2 million in their budget for the same purpose, and 376,000 in the transfer to Fund 250, which is where the majority of the employees supporting the AAA grant are housed. And with that, are there any questions for Director Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Are there any questions? Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have one question. And in the earlier discussions, they said that the rates and the fees were going to be going up for our seniors. What is the current fee right now? Is it $14 annually?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, the fee currently stands at $15.
And it's going to be going from 15 to 20?
To 20.
Have you gauged the senior citizen community regarding those increases? Because many of our seniors in this community are on a fixed income. And for some of those individuals, that may seem like a substantial increase of $5 annually. Have you talked to the seniors about this increase?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, certainly in my short eight weeks, I've had many conversations with some of our constituents. Certainly, we provide a great service and programs at a great value. We certainly would never deny anyone services of our facilities or our programs at all. So we actually take a very, very broad stance with being able to make sure that we accommodate citizens from our community.
So if somebody does not have the resources, they would still be accommodated and could attend our senior centers? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any other questions? Yes, Counselor Harris.
Probably for Mr. Romero, I forgot on cultural services. But we had a lot of folks from the Balloon Museum who were concerned that the, the fees are going up, but they're not getting a bigger cut. And I didn't really want to ask the advocates at the time, but tell me what's going on with that, and is it something that we should be worried about? I guess you've got the director up here.
If I may.
Got three choices here.
Director Sanchez, if you'd like to answer, you could do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor, could you just repeat your question? I was kind of halfway up on.
Sure. We had several people from the Balloon Museum, and I think that one of the themes that I heard is that, and it looks like it's true, that the fees for the Balloon Museum are going up some, the gate fees, looks like they're going up. And I think the, the people from the board, or the foundation, think that they should get a cut of that or something. So I, I'm sure you're more knowledgeable about their arguments than I am, based on what I heard tonight. But tell me, could you give me the, the background and the department's position?
Well, the department's position is that we were all asked to really do our best to raise revenue for the city, because we definitely had some structural deficits. And so that was a, a place that we could raise revenue at both museums. Our museums are very much under in terms of admission fees compared to other cities in the region. And I think it's, it's natural that the advocates of that museum want some of that money to come back to them. I think it's just that simple.
So tell me, how, what percentage of the gate do they get now? And what percentage of the funding for the museum do they raise? I mean, if you define some sort of.
Historically, admission fees go into the general fund. And so that's, that's just how it has worked historically. In terms of percentage that, that they raise through revenue?
So they don't get any share of the gate now?
No, it goes into the general fund. Is that correct?
Okay.
Ms. Nyer.
Madam Chair, Counselor Harris, yeah, it's, it's not just a, it's not a direct line like that where they get a percentage. So whatever they get in the budget bears some relationship to what they raise at the gate. I think the, the request that was, the piece of the request that was denied was actually fairly technical. They actually wanted to take that increase or that delta in revenue and put it into sort of a special revenue fund that could only be used for them. And so we denied that because, coming from the auditor's office, we know that special revenue funds are a giant pain in accounting, and they just, they're sort of a setup to mess up. Also, we know that the city was facing a structural deficit and didn't think it was financially prudent to commit all of those revenues to be solely used for the Balloon Park Museum. That said, we'd be happy to use the money for the things that they've requested. It's just a, a matter of whether it's solely designated for that purpose or not. We denied the, the sole designation, but we didn't say that we wouldn't spend that money at the museum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Thank you, Director. We still have here Director of Senior Affairs. Are there any other questions? I guess not. Thank you. You're doing a very good job. Thank you all. Mr. Romero, do you have a closing on this?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I just also want to recognize budget staff who've put in a lot of long hours and weekends, and thank you for your support. We look forward to talking with you again on the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. So, Counselors, I, yeah, I would like to move deferral of R-24, appropriating funds for operating the government of the City of Albuquerque for fiscal year 2019, beginning July, okay, move deferral to May 10th. There's a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Also, I would like to move deferral to May 18th of R-25, establishing a one-year objectives for the City of Albuquerque. All those, do I have a motion and a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. See you all on May 10th. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.